Can you do it, Taryn?
Yeah.
All right, perfect.
Karen, we're here for the discussion on the Backroom Brewery's grant master agreement.
Yes, sir. So in October 2018, the Board of Supervisors at that time approved a grant agreement between the EDA and the county and Backroom Brewery, which you have in your packet.
Yep.
That was signed by Backroom Brewery but was never signed by the Board.
So why was it not signed by the Board? Do we know?
Well, I think that was kind of the time when the EDA...
Okay. So it was not wise to execute any additional agreements at that time?
Yeah.
I think they...
I mean, that's our perspective.
Okay.
Kayla and I were not involved then.
Okay.
And don't want them here, so...
Okay.
One of my favorite words, "don't want them here." Love it.
So we're trying to get... To get an understanding of, you know, the whole... So in the agreement, it's kind of mirrored to when the county had our enterprise zone and we gave tax incentives for the new industry coming, you know, 80% first year, 60% second year. And for hers, it's over a 10-year period. And I have numbers, but it's the only spreadsheet I could find, and it was back starting in 2019. So now, this was from that first one that was approved in 2018. So it's giving her the tax... And the way we understand it is that she would pay her taxes and then the EDA would give her the percentage back as a grant. And that's for the 10-year period. And then, the other part of the agreement is a tourism grant of $5,000 for five years. And that was contingent upon her receiving this AFID grant, but she ended up receiving a USDA grant for $250,000, I believe.
Yes.
So that tourism grant was always contingent upon that other grant. So that was kind of... So we... Mr. Stanley had came to the tourism committee back in same time, like late 2018. And the tourism committee was seeing fine with it. We don't really have, you know, a grant program. I started working on that after that time. But so the $5,000 was just a grant from the tourism money that was contingent upon her receiving that grant, which was the AFID grant. And now since she received USDA grant, it could be counted to that. So that language has been changed.
Or will be changed.
So it's not changed yet because in my packet, it's still the old language.
Okay, so this is the old language.
So you will change the language, however, to reflect that she got a $250,000 grant, that $5,000... She'll get the $5,000 from tourism. And then, EDA will refund her a portion of her taxes for the next...
10 years.
10 years. As a... Yeah. And she has to put this... So the grant, from what I understand, even though she's getting $250,000, she has to put it upfront.
Yeah, she has to pay 100% of her taxes. That's by Virginia Code.
Okay.
And then, y'all would rebate back 80% of what... Of the qualified investment to the EDA, then we give it back to her as a grant. I think that's how you have to do things from a legal standpoint.
Okay.
And I just noticed something here, and Taryn, you tell me I'm wrong, and be quiet. But I think on the tourism...
You all know as much about it as me.
Yeah, I think we're all kind of getting up to speed. I think the tourism grant is for 10 years and it's $5,000 a year, so it'd be 50 grand.
No, I was thinking on 25,000. Oh, the 25 investment.
Yeah, so they're looking for a minimum of $25,000 investment on the tourism grant, and then a minimum of $800,000 on the incentive, the tax rebate. She's... It says here a minimum of $800,000.
Wait, she's already... I believe that's already been invested because she has since built something out there.
The barn.
Yeah, she built the barn.
She has the big barn, yeah.
So that $800,000, she's already met that.
She has, great.
And then, she has employees, and she will hire those employees.
And it's two times the minimum wage, definitely is what we have in here.
Right, and then five net new.
And then makes the minimum $25,000 investment.
So $25,000 investment, five new employees at twice the minimum wage for the tourism grant.
Right.
Then 800 grand of investment, gotta pay 100% of your taxes each year. Board of Supervisors takes 80% for first two years, then 60, 40, 20, the last four years. Gives that to the EDA, which we then pass through to Backroom Brewery. Does that sound about right?
Yes.
Well, it does say 10. Spreadsheet shows five years for $5,000, but the agreement says 10 years.
Yeah, she had told me five years. A total of $25,000, five for five years.
That's what she told me as well.
Okay, and then we'll make it five years.
We'll make it five, yeah?
Yeah, it's always been five.
Okay. We'll make it five.
But you're right, we agree with her.
And then we'll make it...
But I think she thinks it's five, too.
Well, and that's what she told... That's what she told me yesterday.
She couldn't make it online, she was able to call.
Right, she called each of us.
Right.
And, yeah, and she, you know, she has... She did a lot of work to get this grant, a whole lot of work. And she really wants to participate in the whole agribusiness tourism industry, which are, you know, kind of the attraction to the farms, to the... So all of these monies have to be invested in those kinds of activities.
I wrote down and then read back to her what I wrote down, and I put $5,000 per year times five years. And like I said, I read it all back to her, what she said, so she understood it at this point.
So we'll just work up this agreement on that basis. And... That's correct. The rebate will be 80, 60, 40, 20, two years of each.
Yeah.
Now, currently, just... Sorry, just to clarify that, currently, it's 80 for two years, 60 for two years, 40 for two years, then I have 20 for four years.
Okay. All right. And one other thing, and this may be more for her to address than us, but in the USDA letter of conditions, it says, "If any proposed matching funds be provided in cash by you or a third party, provide an updated bank statement or letter verifying availability and use of pledged cash or line of credit for eligible project purposes dated within 30 days of the expected start date of the grant period." So I think she's going to have to work with USDA to understand, or let them know, the local match is going to occur a little down the road, and it's not going to be immediately available. And I just hope that USDA is okay with that. You know, I think that's something we need to point out to Billy, she should probably have that discussion with USDA.
She might match it herself and then be reimbursed herself.
Could be.
So, okay.
I just don't want her to lose sight of that and end up in trouble.
So do we mark it up and put it on the board agenda?
You're all good with it?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we'll make the changes.
How much... When do we expect us to go on the board agenda?
The next meeting? I mean...
Can you get it done by the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, because the contract's already drafted. It's just...
Minor change.
...not, and it's...
So it would be November 17th?
The November 17th.
17th, okay. All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that was easy.
For once.
Phew! Nice to have an easy one.
Especially when it's something involved with the...
Yeah, exactly. Usually, you're too complicated.
Next is the overview of the Parks and Recreation Department. Dan? Mr. Lance?
Yeah.
Dan? Do you have a handout for us?
No, it's on the car. But we could send it to you.
I had a... You had a nice presentation that I had from before, earlier this year.
Any comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. Good afternoon, Chairman Mabe and members of the board and staff. Assistant Director Robert Richardson and I are here today to present a general summary of the Warren County Parks and Recreation Department. We'll be talking about how our divisions are organized, what's included in our budgets. And we'll also be discussing some of our responsibilities. We'll also include and provide a breakdown of each of our divisions, which is administration, recreation programs, and parks maintenance. We'll also be providing a list of budget concerns as we begin to prepare our 2021-2022 fiscal budget. Staff and I work extremely hard to provide Parks and Recreation services to be the best for our community. We live in a beautiful and historic area in the Shenandoah Valley, and each of our divisions work together co-ideally to try to produce our best product. We can begin. Just to recap, our mission, the mission of the Warren County Parks and Recreation Department is to acquire, develop, operate, and maintain a park and recreation system which will improve the quality of life for all residents of Warren County through educational park, recreation, cultural, and leisure opportunities. It is the goal of the department to provide the highest quality of service experience possible with individual personalized attention to each and every participant. Our history, created in 1986 in order to foster a town and county-wide approach to the delivery of recreation and nature services. I was hired as the first director of Park Row Parks and Recreation Department. The department was launched through innovative delivery of services with the help of the town of Park Row and the county of Warren. As partners, their goal was to provide a comprehensive array of recreational nature services for the entire community. In 2000, the department came, a county of Warren Parks and Recreation operation. This new endeavor was designed to complement and enhance existing programs and traditions. The department has made significant strides in recent years, sharing services between the Warren County Public School Athletic Departments and other area recreational organizations, thus improving maintenance at park and athletic facilities and building positive working relationships with all of the youth sports organizations. At this time, we'd like to show you a brand-new promotional video of our Parks and Recreation System. I hope you'll enjoy it. It was produced by Charles King Photography in Page County.
Can I close this? Mr. Mallenger wants me to spray in here before his movie.
Yeah, sure, go ahead and close it.
I won't get it on yourself.
I hope everybody enjoyed that brief two-minute video. Our Parks and Recreation Department senior staff, again, Robin here is our left, Assistant Director, she's in charge of recreational operations. Mr. Brad Kreske was going to be here today, but he had a family emergency and could not. As our Parks Maintenance Supervisor in charge of the Parks Maintenance, and myself, the Director. Between the three of us, we have over 60, 65 years' experience in the Parks and Recreation field. Our organizational chart for administration is Director, Assistant Director, Office Manager, and Senior Office Associate. To our left, Kelly Zitzers, our full-time Office Manager. She's been with us for about a year and a half. Debbie Cook is our full-time Senior Office Associate, has been here for about 14 years. They're very professional and they're very good to work with, especially if you're in public. The administrative division, the Warren County Parks and Recreation Department coordinates policy and department planning, short-term and long-term capital projects, and directs department functions. Necessarily, read all these in the interest of time, I'll just highlight a couple of them. Manages 17 full-time and over 90 part-time seasonal employees, coordinating policy and department planning, short-term and long-term capital projects, and directs department functions, overseeing the operational duties of parks and facilities, maintaining parks and recreation facilities in accordance to safety standards published by a recognized organization. Budget management is key, and identification as a assessment of recreational needs. And then, just lastly, serves as a county representative of a variety of boards, committees, and missions, and you're familiar with the Parks and Recreation Mission, which Robin and I serve on. Okay? I'll turn it over to Robin.
I'm the recreational program division, where stands all of our bosses. Myself, I have two full-time people underneath me, which is my Recreation and Aquatics Coordinator, and I have a Recreation and Aquatic Supervisor. We are considered the recreation program division, however, we do maintain the Clave-Stokes Junior Community Swimming Pool and all of its facets as well. I have a part-time office associate, and then I have several... Currently, I only have three facility supervisors, and about five recreational supervisors. Pre-COVID, we were at about six and 20. So that's our little... We basically run with three full-time people. And I will say, they are not related, although they all have the same last name.
No.
They're not at all.
What are the chances of that?
Yeah. Yeah, Tiffany Walker, which is my Recreation and Aquatics Coordinator, she's probably been with me full-time for about seven years, six years, but she's worked for me ever through high school. Actually, when I came to the department in 1991, her mom worked for me. Rachel Walker has been full-time for about three years. She is my aquatics bureau. She works mainly at the pool in the summertime. And Sheila Walker will have been with us just about a year in January, and she's my part-time. She handles all my staff at the community center and our rentals and everything there. If anybody recognizes that little boy or not. But anyways, recreation.
That was a long time ago.
Yeah, it's a long time ago, Taryn's little boy. Basically, recreation is exactly what it is. I mean, we provide special winter's fitness classes, camps, programs for family and children, youth sports programs, basketball, flag football, gymnastics. We do special events. Most of those are normally around during holidays. Tons of bus trips, athletic museums, things like that. Of course, this was all pre-COVID. We also schedule all athletic field use, and we coordinate everything with the public school system, which they are huge help to us because with only having the one gym, it's really hard to do a lot of things. We also are responsible for not only the rentals at the community center, but also at the Health and Human Services Complex, all the outdoor athletic facilities, and the pool as well. This is just generalizing some of the things we do as well, all the year-round programming, whether it's for youth, has swimming lessons. One thing I will focus on during COVID is we couldn't do anything. So we came up with these stay-at-home activity boxes that were a huge hit. We're getting ready to do a few of those as well for the holidays, just to give the kids something outside of their schoolwork to do. We coordinate all field usage with the public school. We maintain all the rentals, as I've said before. We are also responsible for all the seasonal daily operations at the pool, whether it's swimming lessons, general swim, lap swim, indoor rentals. My division is responsible for the webpage and all promotion that goes online. And normally, we do about a 50-page booklet that'll tell you everything that we're doing. Of course, we're not doing that at this time. We acquire our sponsors and volunteer donation programs for the department. We develop expanding to improve the quality of our facilities. We have an online retro system that my office also maintains, and we've been helping develop the COVID response and public awareness. Just some of our program offerings here. This up in the corner was what's... One thing we started was family movie nights at the pool, which were a huge hit. This is our Run-Jump Throw Summer Camp Program, gymnastics and basketball, of course. This just highlights some of the things that we do when we can. Anywhere from our schools' closed gyms, open program, that was a thing that we partnered with. Kids didn't have anything to do when there wasn't any school, so we opened up our gym and they just come and play. Walking and hiking clubs, majon, basketball, gymnastics, ballet, flag football. We don't offer baseball or anything that, like, there's an outside organization that does. That's like Little League and girls' softball. And there's also two travel tackle teams that we don't have anything... We help facilitate, that's about it.
No, thank you. The Maintenance Division is, again, Brad is not here, and happy to do it for him. There's the Director of Maintenance, supervisor is Brad. The Assistant Maintenance Supervisor is Lee Cogburn. He's been with the department over 30 years. That's a great guy. Construction Project Coordinator Alan Munson. If you need something done, ask Alan, he'll do everything for you. He's very, very good. We have eight motor equipment operators, full-time power maintenance, air labors. They're all part-time. We're down three. We've been... Actually, four. We were down six up until about a month ago. We're just not hiring. People are just not coming out to do part-time jobs. Park Rangers, we have two. We should have three. Our head park ranger retired after 11 years of service with the county. And here's a picture of our current staff. Brad is in the middle, they're all wearing masks, and as they should. And Maintenance Division, the Parks and Recreation Department Maintenance Division is responsible for the maintenance of grounds and facilities, ensuring they are safe, clean, and attractive. The Maintenance Division follows Parks and Recreation Department guidelines for conservation of natural areas and open space for passive use. The Maintenance Division works with the Parks and Recreation Department on the development and expansion of park system, and it maintains 20 parks and over 400 acres that includes other county properties. And on July 1st, 2019, we've taken on the responsibility for all grounds, maintenance services to include for the public schools, mowing, trimming, mulching, pruning shrubs, bushes, trees, application of pesticides, erosion, athletic fields, again, school system. I can just highlight a few of these, responsible for the maintenance of ground and so least to ensure they are safe, clean, attractive, according to Parks and Recreation Standards. Follows department guidelines for conservation of natural areas and open space for passive use. We contribute to the development and expansion of park system. Mentioned the next... Have mentioned the next two. We always like to try to conduct safety inspections. Right now, we're doing one every three months. We should be doing it every one month. As of coming this Friday, several staff are going to be participating in a seminar, but they do seminars, workshops, and other opportunities to increase knowledge of safety in parks maintenance. And lastly, we have done at the beginning, we'll continue to do implementing COVID-19 safety precautions in compliance with the executive orders. Some pictures of our staff in the shop, as well as out in the park system. And I can highlight just a few of these. I think, Dolores, you had mentioned this back in June, I think the three of you, Chairman Mabe and you couldn't make it, but Vice Chair Oatsen, the county administrator, daily attended the park tour. We did provide everybody with one of these packets. It's a tool. We did give them to the board, department heads and unconstitutional officers. I'm just going to highlight a couple of things you know, but a lot of people aren't aware that the maintenance shop is actually located in Miller Park. And again, the signature facility is the stadium. I think it was being named after a person that came here once, but actually twice, in 1948, 1950. Just skipping down to Broeberg's Park. Brandy may have mentioned Rosser, that playground was important against every you were... Did attend the Music Park dedication for Limerick and Holquist. But this playground, we're working with... Staff and I were working with frame and land design, developed a site plan. We did bring in new equipment. We also brought in engineered mulch and border that we're going to use as a prototype of our parks. And then, if you're familiar with Riverton Park, that's on Riverton Way, that's on the boat landing. And Peter LeWu Park, I will mention this, that is Kitty Corner, you saw it in the video. It's across the street from Chumby Field Park. It's the first established park in the town of Park Row back in the late 1940s. And Constitution Oak Park is directly outside of this building. It's a very small city park. It's got its name after the Constitution Oak that was planted in 1901. Unfortunately, we had to remove it because it was dangerous. You're familiar with Easton Park, but I would like to mention grant funding for our three trails that Brandy was able to get. And we, as a department, and Brandy and the county, worked with the Warren County Dog Park Association. Our staff did construct the dog park that's now very, very popular. Again, Rockland Park, site, excuse me, a master plan developed in 2009. It is a 20, more like a 30-year plan, again, with the development that they were in phase one. If we get more grants and so forth, we can address that. Linden Park is a park in the county, communit-- this will hold. Warren County Athletic Department Sauner Park property, that's out in the county, Indian Hollow. Bentonville, that is undeveloped, that was given to the county, I would say, eight to 10 years ago. We have put a wooden fence around the entire property. Simpson Boat Landing, we did not tour that. That's out in Thunderbird Farms, off of 619. Simpson Boat Landing, excuse... Sorry, Catlet Ford Landing is about three miles off of Darrell Hill Road, very small. Shenandoah Farms, this farmer road up in the county, and Thompson's Kiss and Ride. It's going to be constructed similar to the Linden Park, and it's up on the free zone. And just the facilities that we maintain, again, the youth center, we have housed the offices of our administration staff, the community center for Brown's staff in recreation. These are other facilities, looking down, Teledata across the street, Chamber of Commerce. And I think there's some rental properties above there and other properties that we take care of. Fire and rescue training facility, ESA property, that's ESA Lane off the John Marshall Highway in Eckamata. Economic Development Authority off of Kendrick Ford Road and Big Bow Drive that we've done some mowing, trimming for them. And again, just mentioning the schools, two high schools, two middle schools and five elementary schools that we do maintain. Warren County Transportation off of Cryer Road and Warren County Public School Food Service and the maintenance building, which is located off of Commerce Avenue. Additional responsibilities that I'd always consider under the department. A lot of people are still unaware that for the past sixty months that we have been keeping, taking care of the grounds of the schools. The county offers state delivery through a work order. We deliver a paper to all county offices and constitutional staff. The election assistance setup, which we just finished this afternoon, usually five or six staff. General services assistance with work order program as well as other programs. The county, in fact, they did holiday lunch, and we've done this in the past issue with COVID. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to do that. And this year, more so than any other year, we've done a lot of work in the fire retention, pond maintenance, not only in park property, but as well as the schools. And of course, there's snow removal. There is no storm that is exactly like. And in our budget, I will say, get started that the senior staff and our office manager monitor our budgets. We do that on a weekly and monthly basis. We want to be fiscally responsible, not only to the county, but also to our citizens. The biggest, the biggest, obviously, is park maintenance of eleven, full-time. And also, the size of the department. Second would be administration, which includes staffing for both at administration and recreation. And then the programming aspect of it is under the program, recreational programs. This is just, again, a bar chart showing the difference between two thousand seventeen and eighteen to two thousand seven hundred and twenty-one. And the seven one oh one account is our administration. Just highlight, gradually over the years, they've increased. I think the increases in personnel and all the operating budgets that dropped, but personnel is due again. Jody's coming this afternoon, but we have, basically, the study was done to increase some of the salaries for county staff. And then we increased our part-time wages. They went up. So you see where your increases are. Under fees, that came from the finance department. That's basically what did Robin, mostly funded through Robin's office. And this is just another bar chart showing, and here too. Okay. Recreation.
Oh, I guess basically just breaking it down is some programming, the operating budget versus fees that we brought in. Of course, you'll see there's no personnel, like Dan said, all my program, all my personnel for recreation and aquatics is all through administration. They took that, they did away with that a couple of years, about ten years ago. So basically, all our operation costs are just fees coming in through programs and fees going out through programs. And it's just a pretty weird look at it. And then this is, of course, showing revenues. As I mentioned before, we run from the community center overs, pretty much all run through the recreational division. Dan's office takes youth center, senior center, and I don't know why shelters isn't on there, but that's a big generated revenue.
She might come from shelter rooms, yeah.
She might have a group of youth center as well, which as you can see, we've, programming is kind of, everybody's kind of topsy-turvy, but it's not too bad for a little piece of the pot. Now there she has, the shelters is on there, about the fourth one down. You can see that they can bring anywhere from, of course, this year's lower, but that's twenty-seven, twenty-eighteen, about seventeen. Community center, a big, I think, athletic facility. Of course, the swimming pool is going to be large, but you just see the overall right there. I like the big bottom number in programming. It's nice to see that number. You've been doing something right somewhere. And then, of course, this is just how we generate our money at the pool, between admissions, passes, rentals, concessions. We do run our own concessions up there. We found it more lucrative than running a vendor, swimming lessons. Lifeguarding's kind of went down a little bit as far as in bringing revenue, because we've been doing a trade-off where if you agree to work for us, I think it's for two years, we'll pay for you to get your lifeguarding and your CPR. But then we turn around, we got one of our instructors certified to teach that. So it's kind of saving us the long way, but like the last four years, we've been doing that, which we found very lucrative. It's been easy to hold and retain staff that way, because these kids are only, you'll see with Jody, a lifeguard makes way less than a facility supervisor does. So it's kind of hard for them to pay two fifty to take a class, only work eight weeks. So we've worked that out, so. And then there's, like I said, there's just another number. I'm not sure if it's in here or not, but I know the big thing is always like, is it paying for itself? And I think we run between about eighty-five to eighty-seven percent cost recovery, normal, in a good year, a nice hot year. And then there's just expenses. You see, we've been breaking them down, so it's been nice.
Parks maintenance budget, seven one oh three oh. Personnel, just highlight here, from two thousand seventeen eighteen at one million three hundred eighty-five thousand four sixty-five. And this year, one million six hundred four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine. I don't know if we came up with that, but it did. But if you look at two thousand nineteen and twenty, that personnel figure, what, why that's so large, two hundred eighty-six thousand dollars was transferred from the school board. Now, at the end of the day, I should say, the end of the year, we did not use all that money. We turned a lot of it back in. The salaries for the schools at that time were a lot higher than what we were paying our staff, anywhere from ten to fifteen thousand dollars or more. So we did turn, we did hire some, obviously, new staff, but not at the cost of what they had. But operating budget is, is, I think, over the last couple of years, last year, I believe, we, for all our budgets, for county budgets as well, was one three percent reduction. And this past year has been one percent reduction. Under capital, over the last several years, I'll say, one thing, Ed came up with a great idea. I don't know if he's going to continue that idea. We'll talk about that in a second. But the capital, the capital that we have are basically, we had to reimburse, for example, I think thirty thousand dollars for, I think it's over six years to pay for the lights at the soccer complex. We do a skid steer that I think we're in our final payment. We use that for our department as well as for Brandy's projects. Very fortunate to have that manpower to do it. And then fed some tractor payments, and then we just purchased a couple of trucks this past year. Ed came up, you remember, you came up with the thought about having, paying one big, set aside some funding for vehicles?
I said vehicle replacement, for creating a vehicle replacement, where the county put a certain number of dollars. Didn't talk about what that number was going to be, but put a certain number of dollars into the fund each year. And it stayed in a central account. And then departments would draw off of that when they were allocated in order to rotate all the vehicles on a regular basis. Every department right now has their own replacement schedule, and it depends on, departments do better getting funding for replacement vehicles than others. And parks and public works are two that usually get into the last place in something like that. And this would try to put everybody on the same page.
Just another graph showing that between two thousand seven eighteen, current year. Just some of our department projects that we're going to be planning and trying to plan and doing over the next year, a year and a half. Paint and seal, chimney field tennis courts, mulch, all Warren County Public Schools and Parks Recreation Playground. The schools basically have been completely set aside funding this year, approximately twenty thousand dollars. We used engineered mulch. It's a long-lasting mulch, it's a little more expensive, but it's better, it's safer. Again, at a prototype, we did use that at Broeck's. Would like to continue doing that in the spring. It's a little bit late in the year now to do it. Ongoing removal of dangerous dead-ass trees in the park system, everybody with that, with what happened, both at Rockland and down at Easton Park. There are several hundred trees that have to be moved. Our staff over the last three years have gone in and selected a cut, specifically the key areas along the trails and also the disco, of course, but we still have to get in there. There's a lot more. We did have a private contractor come in just to see what it would cost at Rockland Park. And it was like fifteen, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars just to root. And that wasn't everything. It was only a percentage of them. So we, we can do this ourselves with just the time of the year, unless it's, if they're in endangerment, then we'll go in there. We'll take care of that. A new basketball court. It's got a soccerplex funded by Coalition. I am a member of that organization over the last, I want to say, eight, eight, nine years. Coalition through grants has given us approximately twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars for facilities. A good example, at Rockland Park, it's the little fitness center that we have there, and also the baskets. But this will be paid for at the current and then next year's budget, so we're planning and trying to do this, I guess, in June of this next year. Brown and I've got a selected location at Stanley to do so. Replacement of aging fence, it just has to be done. There's a lot, it's just age, wind, sometimes it's vandalism, but it has to be done. Reseal Vansland Playground for those who've been around for at least twenty-seven years, living in the area. That was a very big project back in nineteen ninety-three. We wanted to maintain it. It was very, very popular. We also assist with the approved special projects list throughout the course of the year for Brandy, our staff. Senior Senator Shelter, we have basically re-rooted shelter, all, all of our shelters except for this specific shelter. We're going to be doing that this winter. Again, I mentioned the playground border. We're going to continue with that here very shortly. A camera system, it been priced with stadium in two thousand eight. The sheriff's office was awarded a grant and put a system in stadium. However, the system is analog. It no longer works. It's, 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 it just doesn't work. All the systems that we have now in our facilities are digital. I think this costs, we do have money set aside. But we would like to have this done here in the next few months. Warren County Community Center Wi-Fi upgrade. We do have budgets for that. We're going to try to, working with Warren County IT to get this basically completed here in the next thirty to forty-five days. And updated trade-off agreement with Warren County Public Schools. This was established back in nineteen eighty-eight when we were front royal. However, we have not looked fully reviewed at it since two thousand eleven. It needs to be done. And Parks Recreation Department budget concerns, hiring and retaining qualified staff. Need to hire two or three full-time maintenance staff and one full-time recreation office staff, just overturn. Our staff is overworked. This year, unlike previous years, we did not have the drought during normal year, but we were just, just overworked. There's a lot of work we needed to get, other than mowing and trimming, we just could not get to as a result of that, so we will be requesting that. Again, I mentioned earlier, we only have done playground inspections like every three months. They need to be done every month. We're just having that time to do it. Mentioned capital funding for repaint chimney field tennis courts. Capital funds for off-the-park exercise station. A lot of the gyms are closed. We're not there using adhesive correct sunlight. We're going to be looking for grant opportunities. If you've been down to the Riverboat Landing area, and if you've seen the little park there with sail, what they call a sail canopy, we're going to be looking at those kinds of canopies. Additional COVID-nineteen requirements, this past year, or this current year, I should say, under COVID, we did not open our restrooms. We brought up portable restrooms, and we did not open our concessions. And we just didn't have staff, the time, to get them open and clean on a regular basis. Aging facilities, recreational playground, we have put this in our CFP the last several years at the track out at the public service complex. It needs to be resurfaced. There are large scraps, cracks, excuse me, they're, it could be a huge liability issue, but we're taking it from year to year, and people have not complained about it too much. And then this last one, next slide, Rob. Is just the aging maintenance vehicle staff, under the dark green in the bar chart. We have eight vehicles. They're under fifty thousand, which are in pretty good shape. We have nine vehicles in the layered green at forty-one percent. They're over a hundred thousand miles. Out of service, we have three that need to be replaced. A lot of this, Ed, and everyone else, we get hand-me-downs from the sheriff's office and the schools, which we're using. And then lastly, we have two vehicles, fifty thousand to one hundred thousand miles. Answer the questions if you may have.
Did we get a copy of that?
Of this? Oh, sure.
I have one.
We could have a paper copy, or we could give you a digital drive, sure.
Digital copy.
We'd be more than happy to do so.
Yeah, because I liked reading, but I couldn't see it from here.
Okay. Any questions?
I have one. I hear it all the time, the youth center. You know, I think everybody who grew up in Warren County and front royal hung out at the youth center on Friday and Saturday nights. And there were dances, and there were chaperones, and there were anything. And I get a question all the time, is what do we have in this community for our youth to do? And I, you know, and why isn't there a youth center? So is there anything in the strategic plan to bring back kind of a youth center environment, or?
I wouldn't say the youth center, but we do have, you want to say, I guess we could say the gym, what we've offered there in the gym.
I mean, I think what you're talking about is like with the youth council used to do on the Friday nights where the kids used to phone and they could dance and things like that, yeah. Right now, facility-wise, we wouldn't have anywhere, because my building's more set up for the
Meetings, right.
The meetings and baby showers and those kinds of things, not to where you could just open the doors and let the kids do. Now, we could possibly do something that, like that at the gym. However, we have protective floor coverings and you'd have to go that way with it.
Talking about the gym, the HHS building?
Yeah. I mean, you could pass, I mean, with his building, I guess, I don't want to say security, but for lack of a word, because your offices are in there and there's somebody else in there now.
Well, when I canvassed door to door, that was the number one, why isn't there something for our kids to do? In that, like, middle school group, right? It's that middle school before you start driving, before, you know, and so they were all asking. So I would challenge you guys to maybe, you know, maybe we could have, I don't know if you can have video game competitions or something that would.
At the Fifteenth Street School, which is what I call it, because
Yeah, that's what we call it if you're from here.
Yeah. We have a gamer room there.
Oh, that's awesome.
We have a book, no, things that we did within our staff, we used resources. We had things donated. Didn't really cross the county anything, and we use those during our schools' closed gyms, open program. So that could be something that we could visit, but to do it on a nightly basis.
That's hard. You wouldn't have the staff, I know.
Well, at the, when I first started at the youth center, we had a gamer room there, and it was open, I think, every night from like five to eight or something like that.
Right.
Our problem with doing it now is
Well, COVID right now, but still.
But before that would be revenue lost because we rent that gym.
Right. I get it.
That's the thing we were talking about right now. I mean, we're losing programming money from COVID, but my rental money for that facility alone has probably tripled, because WCPS isn't open. And we're getting a lot of travel and things like that. So, you know, you could possibly try to work something out post-COVID if we ever
If we ever are post-COVID, yeah.
To where, you know, we could do something like that, maybe not every Friday night. I mean, I think about, that was every other Friday.
It was. It was every other Friday. We danced. It was just, you know, there was always music. It was great. I mean, we all hung out there, and every one of us who grew up here have fond memories.
And the location was perfect.
I know, of our families drunk. Well, maybe not fond.
When you live in Brownham, Bentonville, and you don't have
You didn't get a ride.
Just, just let me add that when, when we did have the group that was in there. Just, just let me add that when, when we did have the group that was in there and we were open, even after I started back in the late eighties into the nineties, what had happened, that's when Rock was still there. When they had the middle school, the middle school was doing a lot of, they're not really griping, but they were in competition.
Right.
And they said, well, we'd rather go to what they're doing at the youth center school because they're, they're just, they're watching us all the time and, and, and that's, it just dissolved. They just, the kids just did not want to do it anymore. But that's not to say you're challenging us to do something. We certainly could do that for you and.
I just would love to see some kind of programming that would give these middle school age kids a place to, a safer, a safe place. Somewhere that if they don't have the structure that they have at home, that they could come and there would be some opportunity for them to do activities or, you know, just something, some sort of programming. I think that's a real big gap in our community.
And that's one of the reasons why we started that schools closed, gyms open program. It's because so many kids didn't, when there wasn't any school, they.
They'll come play basketball.
And we have 50, 60 kids at that.
I've seen it. I mean, it's huge.
This would just be, I think, on like a, a more structured, not want to say structured, because they did structure, but more of a, so every third Friday, we're going to provide this or something like that.
Right, on a more, yeah, regular scheduled basis where kids knew that they could come and maybe hang out and, yeah.
Did you say?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In case it's safe, you're right.
Yeah, just, yeah. So anyway, that's the only thing. I got it a lot when I was campaigning.
Sure. We like a challenge.
Yeah.
We look forward to it.
Well, like you don't have enough to do, right?
Well, no, no, I mean, it's, but I'd like hearing from yourselves and, and then the citizens too, if they come up with an idea, we could try something. Or always, I mean, a couple, it was a year ago summer, we came up with a great idea, a plan for work, a day on that one July.
Oh, yeah, we actually did a, because July is National Parks and Recreation Month and we actually had a Parks and Rec Day. And we had things throughout the community at the different parks and things like that, so.
It worked out real well for us.
It's awesome. I love Rockland Park. I live out that way and it's one of my favorite. We love, we take our dogs up there and we love the dog park too, so. They're places that we enjoy as a family. I like it a lot.
Any other questions?
I don't have any. We thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your time.
Thank you for having us today. I hope, and if you have any questions in future, feel free to contact us, we'll be glad to help you.
Okay. Coming always.
Yes.
Yes, well, thank, yes.
I made the comment today and as we were sitting going through this, I'm like, I mean, there were 30 years. It's like amazing just to see it on a piece of paper.
We had one for seven.
I remember.
The youth center.
The youth center, yes.
I remember it.
Mr. Seifmeyer's.
But there's just one last thing, does everybody, whether you'd like a PowerPoint, everybody would like a PowerPoint.
You can just email it to me because I don't.
You can't do it, it's too large.
It's too big, okay.
We can just put them all in these little pretty.
Yeah, these little.
Yeah, thank you.
I didn't print mine either, so. I'll, I'll bring it to you. I can bring you all copies and bring it to you.
And that's fine.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, guys.
Because we don't need any more paper.
Yeah, really.
I have this much paper at my house.
I got more than that.
It's stacked up top, yeah.
Yeah, it's horrible like.
All right. Hang in there.
We've got a few more minutes.
I'll try to go as fast as I can. Okay, um, Warren County Planning.
Done?
So the planning department mission is to assist the community in developing the county to its best potential. We have five, typically we have five employees. I'm the planning director and then we have Matt, he's the planner too. And Joe, he's the zoning administrator. And Emma's our GIS coordinator and Cindy retired in October. So we're feeling a void there for our administrative assistants, but hopefully we can get that filled. Here's our organizational chart. So again, it's us five. Just a little bit about our budget. I did not go into the extent that Dan did, but his budget is much more complex than, than the planning budget. Our total budget is $462,526. Our personnel budget is $383,932 of that. And that's staff pay and that is compensation for our planning commission and BDA members. We have an operating budget of $63,594. $26,765 of that goes to the regional commission because we, we help fund them and we, they help us with all of our state mandated planning projects. They help us with a lot of planning projects in general. We have travel and training for our planning commission and BDA members. I have a cell phone stipend and then this is operation of our, our one, we have one department truck that we've had for a very long time. And I've been putting back money each year for a long time and we now have enough money to purchase a new vehicle. And we have enough money to be able to purchase, I mean, Explorer, I'm thinking like, like the building inspections. So that now I don't have to borrow a vehicle every month to take the planning commission and the BDA members out. We'll have room in the vehicle for when COVID, when we can ride together again, then.
Do you have to take individual vehicles now?
Right now, we're taking, we're meeting on site, taking individual vehicles. But typically, we always have met here and then I take the planning commission out each month and we visit all the properties.
Go visit those locations, okay.
And it's so beneficial.
Yeah.
Prior to the meeting. And our BDA members, we do the same, but we've never had a vehicle to accommodate that. So I've always either, I would usually just use one of David's old Explorers or the station wagon, which it was just hard to fit us in.
I was going to say, even the term station wagon, Taryn leads me back to, yeah.
But we've had some good times on the planning missions.
I'm sure.
But, so that, I plan on actually coming forward, putting that on, on agenda soon. But we do have the money set aside, special projects for that totally. And then our capital budget is $14,000. $9,000 of that goes to all of our GIS, our geographic information system licenses for the entire department. So that's our software and then computer equipment. We try to replace one computer a year for the staff, so. About the planning department, we are the primary staff support for the planning commission, which as you all know, is a recommending body to the board. Five members and then we have our Board of Zoning Appeals, which are our five members as well. They handle the zoning variances and appeals. We have our law and subject appeals board, which is, consists of three members. Tony is the board supervisor representative for that. And then we have Jim Davis from the Health Department and Rob Frannoli is a citizen member for that group. We can't read this, we have, we have usually several of those a year. That's not a board that meets a lot. We have Development Review Committee, which meets each month. That's a committee of various agencies, state agencies and local agencies. And that committee is really to streamline development processes. And I really think, we established that in about 2012 and it's really been a great committee that's really foster communication, especially between the town and county and the different agencies. Agricultural and Forestry District Committee, that committee does not meet very often, but right now they are reviewing. There are three, are three districts which are coming to offer public hearing at your next meeting. And then we do the joint town, county tourism advisory committee or county representative on that.
What will be coming to us for our next?
Your agricultural and forestry districts, we have, our three are up for renewal.
Renewal, okay.
By the end of this year. Timus Colors is the representative on that. Our urban responsibilities, daily responsibilities, first and foremost, we, we serve the public. So we assess the public daily with many of these questions. We get a lot of phone calls, a lot of walk-ins. Our main goal is always to provide a high level of customer service. We assist applicants for rezonings, conditional use permits, zoning variances, well and subject variances, ordinance amendments. We issue a lot of home occupation permits. We did, we did over 200 last year and I think we're even above that this year because we're before we're working from our home. And that's for a variety of those types, consulting, work, retail sales, internet sales, get cannibaling, all kinds of different businesses. We force the county subdivision ordinance, so we approve, review and approve all lots, consolidations and boundary adjustments. We do probably 40 each of those a year. We do class A, B and C subdivisions, so that falls into how many lots you're creating. Mostly we do class A, which is creating four lots or less. But we meet, we have a lot of subdivisions in the pipeline and a lot of subdivisions actually active right now. We do exempt subdivisions, those are your subdivisions that are creating 20 lot, 20 acres or more in lots. And then we do family subdivisions. We review and approve all site development plans for all commercial and industrial developments. We have several industrial developments currently are under site stay review. And then of course, we're finishing up with the Chaplain and the Five Guys Building. We review and approve all zoning permits for residential and commercial building permits. We enforce the county zoning ordinance. We do floodplain management. We issue a lot of floodplain determinations for property owners and the floodplain mainly for their insurance purposes. We coordinate development approvals with Health, Highway, Soil Conservation and other outside agencies. We work with the regional commission closely with regional planning efforts. I'm the chair of the Regional Transportation Technical Committee. We do hazard mitigation planning with them. Anything that comes down, that's especially state mandated, we work with them. They handle it on a regional basis and really is helpful. We're currently working with them on, we received $18,000 from one of the VOD programs for a local bicycle and pedestrian plan, which we're working on them with. Our extra COVID responsibilities, we're currently handling all of the COVID-19 reimbursements for the category B expenditures to female as you know, for all county departments.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. That's tedious, I know.
She didn't sound really excited about it.
It is tedious.
I know.
Yeah, I, I enjoy it, it's just, it's time consuming, but, okay. But we're all taking on extra responsibilities, so it's not just me. Learned a lot. So the planning part of our department, we do long-range planning, so we have our comprehensive plan. This is the county's official policy guide. It provides a picture of how the county is to develop over the next 15 to 20 years. It evaluates short-term actions against long-term goals and it is a legal requirement and imperative for it.
So Taryn, I'm going to interrupt you there on the comprehensive plan. Now you're, are we redoing that?
I can talk about that.
Okay.
I know, I'm just timing it.
Okay.
So it's broken down into various parts. So we have our history, our demographics, our natural resources section. Land use obviously is a main section of the comp plan. We have a whole community facility section. We have an evidence development picture of the section.
That's a beautiful Cheryl. I think I don't want to look at that.
Infrastructure and then we have a whole implementation section. So it's broken down into those parts. The last, the current comp plan was adopted in March 2015. So it's to be reviewed and updated every five years. It's implemented through the budget, the capital improvement program, our zoning ordinance, our zoning map and our subdivision ordinance. So in 2018, we picked off this strategic visioning exercise. We actually brought in a consultant for this and this was the first time we had ever brought in someone from the outside. We, we've handled the last two updates just really internally and haven't had to spend any money from outside consultants. But we thought it might be good to get an outside just kind of mediator and, and point of view from, from another consultant. So it was a good process. We did a citizen survey, which we have during every comp plan update, but I, if you all don't have that, I would definitely provide that.
We do. We got that in our orientation packet. And I went through that because we're, you know, we're doing that advance. So I went through it, the strategic visioning and in read the surveys. And so the surveys, were they done in 2018 or were they done? Okay. So they're relatively fresh, I mean, two years. So they're pretty accurate.
They are.
You know, because the biggest concern was traffic. It, that's their number one. So, and yeah, I mean, if you heard.
John Marshall Highway was always, was the biggest.
If you saw the social media over the last three weekends, you, you'd understand that that was for sure their biggest issue.
Yeah, you just stay out of Happy Creek if you live out there.
Yeah.
Go out of John Marshall on Saturdays.
Our visioning exercise kicked off the comprehensive plan. We, we have three new planning commission members. Before our, I knew that the planning commission, you know, we were, members were up for reappointment starting in the beginning of this year with the board. So the only, we only did one chapter last year, which was chapter three, the natural resources. And we spent about three months going over that chapter in great detail. And that's a, that's a extensive chapter, chapter. We do have a lot of natural resources in the county and David helps with that chapter. There's a lot of, you know, talks about stormwater. And then we just kind of stalled it. I wanted to kind of get them trained a little and just familiar, just getting into planning in general before we jump back into that. But I think that will be soon, that will start rolling. We usually do go chapter by chapter and just break it down by section and there's goals and objectives of each section. So that'll be our next steps. This is the vision that was.
It's in the strategic, it's in the visioning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this was, and a lot of that focused on, you know, housing. In, in the visions we've had throughout, since I've been here, well, probably the two to three percent annual growth rate, that came in really about 2007, 2008, when, when we were getting 425 building permits a year. And the board supervisors at that time looked at it and tried to determine a growth rate that would be sustainable so that the county could keep up with providing services, but still have a healthy rate of growth. And we have not come really close to that since that time. I mean, we're at a 1% basically annual growth rate. And we, we measure that from new housing permits. So we, we monitor that.
So what, what do you all see as the reason for the limited amount of growth? Is it?
So it was at that point, we were at a 2.8% growth rate and the board looked at it and we were having to provide, I mean, just the schools and the services that the county was having to provide for the new residential growth. They didn't think going past that three, three percent number would really be sustainable in the services they could provide at the rate.
And I would agree with that, but at 1% growth, you have, I mean, that's probably anemic.
Yeah.
So.
And it's been below.
Isn't it?
It's even been.
You don't think so?
I don't think it's really anemic. It's a, it's an, it's a lower rate for this area, but I wouldn't call it anemic.
So when we were at 0.5, that was low. That was like 2010.
Okay, and we're at 1% now? So compared to, tell me what like Winchester Frederick County is. I mean, is it like two, three, is, you know, because.
No, they're under, Frederick might be at three, but Winchester's under two.
So.
Winchester, they, and it goes in cycles, you know? Like she was saying, 2010, we saw this real flattening, if you will. And I think, David, it started picking up in the last two years a little bit and it's starting to grow you. I see that the builders out there were building one house at a time and now they've each got three in the pipelines. They're, they've got one starting and one just about finished and one in between. So they're moving their crews in between the three of them and they're already laid out their next lot for number four when they finish that number one.
Because when I see provide a variety of housing choices, that's where I think your problem is. I think there's not a variety of housing choices in Warren County, which might be the reason for the less than a 1% growth rate.
I don't think that they're, I don't think that the builders have that. I don't think that they're, I don't think that the builders have that factor then at all.
Right. No, theirs is driven by profit.
Absolutely. And the economy, and the economy, right?
Right, which it should be, right.
Yes, absolutely. And so last year, we were at 150 building, new home permits.
Right.
And we're right on track for that this year.
For the same?
It's pretty much the same. Don't you think, David? I've been looking up.
Quite possibly, we may hit 200.
Okay.
So I didn't realize there was that.
Going back, and the main point that the board decided the 3%, we went, it depends on how you actually measure it, physical year or budgetary year, and there's a difference in that number, obviously. But we were at approximately 450 homes during the height. Our low point, we were below 50 homes, a 90% drop.
Wow.
So to go from 50 to 200 is still, and the 200 to 300 housing per year is a good rate for Warren County.
Okay.
And that, right now, if you talk to Keith, the new financier, or John Marts, the Social Services, or Dr. Ballinger, they'll tell you that houses sell as soon as they're ready.
Yep.
And you really got to buy the house when it's still in the pipeline, because it's going to be ready in another month and a half, and it's going, somebody's going to grab it in about two weeks. So they're selling them right along. You don't see any for sale signs down there. And they're all, they're all single-family units. They're not apartments, and they're not rental units out there. It's just what they are. They're, and they're all being built, a lot of it, to anticipation of the medical community.
Right, I knew that.
When the hospital opens, they want to be over there.
Right.
Primarily because they're going to work there.
Yep.
Or their office is going to be there, in one of the other buildings.
And just to point out, this growth rate, I mean, we have a lot of lots that are platted, and it's not for, to, of course, stop any new construction or anything. That is for if we would receive like an 800-unit rezoning, then we could, that growth rate could be used to have the buildings phased in over a number of years, you know, 100 units per year from this one development. You know, just to, it's just a goal that can be used for growth management, really, in that type of...
Well, and it doesn't take into the town, it doesn't take into account the town or no?
It does not.
Okay.
I mean, they have their own plan.
Right.
But we, and the property that we did in, it's under the town, the 600 acres, that's really where we, the county and the town, work together to designate that area as kind of the future urban development areas of the town, and county, where certain infrastructure is, you know, services can be provided.
And this is Mary Shady's lane.
Yes. And I will point out that it is on the Planning Commission agenda, the owner of that land is looking to change 200 acres, put that into a solar farm.
Right.
Is it Mary Shady, or Shore's Drive, or any two?
It's actually kind of in between. Mary Shady is kind of goes up the middle.
Yep.
Up the middle of the property.
And then you can get to it, you know, off of Shandor Shore's Road, and it overlaps. It's a large area of property, but it's really a great place for different housing.
Multi-level, yeah, multi-use kinds of housing options is what they, I think, was the strategic.
That was like the plan.
Right.
It was.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's probably more.
Yep.
If it's, if it's going to be solar, we want red and green for Christmas time.
And I hate to lose that area for that future growth, I mean, for the separate housing, personally.
Well, is the, I think, well, we can go off on a tangent there, so I'll let you...
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
So, yeah, quality jobs, schools, I mean, every, you know, this kind of...
Work left play here.
Yeah. We do capital improvement planning, so we used to do this on an annual basis. Our last time, we did a two-year, two fiscal year, but we normally try to do this as a guide to assist the board in the development of the budget. This will, we will need to update this soon, because this was from fiscal year 2018 to 2020. So this has all of the capital projects. Nonrecurring estimate has to be $50,000 or more, $100,000 or more for any school projects. We do, of course, land use planning. This is the, this is the, actually, this is the current land use map for the, for the 522 corridor, which is the only place where we do have public water, so we're in agreement with the town. We have an Everleigh district in that area, 1,000 feet on each side, that has additional zoning on top of the current zoning. We run the conservation easement program for the county out of the planning office. We currently hold 34 easements and 3, 3,500 acres are held in the county. Working with a property owner right now that is going to come before you. They just said at your next meeting for an additional 500 acres to be held by the county in easements. So this is actually a really great program. We also have a purchase of developments rights program that isn't funded, but I received a grant of, it was about $65,000, a couple of years ago, and it was mashed by a local conservation council, and we were able to purchase an easement of 50 acres on the river in the South River District. That was between other conservation district easements. So that's a good program as well, if we can get grants for that. We do transportation planning, so this is our transportation plan for the corridor. I was working with Benoni Engineering to do a more detailed layout of this, but the lines are for future road improvements, and basically, when, this is to create roads to keep the level of service on 34522 as fast as we can. So we'll create our curro roads that you can get from one site to the other without having to get back out on the main road. So if you look at the Marriott and you look at Caroline Drive, that is actually a section of the roadway that they built. If you look at Crooked Run and 711, where it barricades off, that is actually a road that's planned by them. With each new rezoning, we get the right of way for those during that development. So Ball Drive was built with this plan, various other roadways out, Winters Court was built with this plan. So this is in the comprehensive plan.
Do you have a thought on Shandor Shores, adding a second outlet, or Mary Shady's Lane having a second outlet?
I mean, we haven't, I mean, we've talked about a horse that fly over the railroad, because they are back in there. I mean, but we don't have transportation plan for that. The town has the east-west connector planned from the Zona Development.
Okay, thank you.
Tourism, we, we got tourism in the planning department when, that was just one of the other duties that came when the memorandum agreement was signed and when the county started collecting the additional change in taxes in, I think, 2017. So we don't have a ton of time to commit to that. We do serve on the committee. I do all the communications for the committee and the agendas, and we're the county representative for all of our regional partnerships, so I try to keep in touch and up with the meetings with Shando Valley Tourism Partnership and Shando Spiritstrom, because we actually, we get a lot of marketing out of that for the whole, for the region. And then our refinding signage program, we have done a lot of work towards that, and hopefully, I definitely want whatever consultant we do hire to take that on and finish that out, so.
So the consultant has been identified, or the company has been identified, and I think they have been notified.
Okay.
So where we go from here is still...
Positive.
Yeah, it's very positive, but where we go from here, we still have to come to some sort of agreement.
Some sort of an agreement wherein the two parties both contribute to a monthly bill.
Right. I think that we're working on that, or they're working on that, too.
So zoning, zoning, obviously, this is our current zoning map of the county. The white is agricultural zoning land. The yellow is our residential zone. Most of our residential zoning was platted prior to zoning coming into effect in 1973, so in the 50s and the 60s, the Shandor Farms and Blue Mountain area, they were platted on the table. And those are, that's what you see in the yellow up to the right. The purple is our industrial land. The commercial is the red. The only place that we really have identified commercial is in the 34522 corridor and at the Linden Interchange, just because of, I mean, the topography in our county and just the way it's laid out, those were the places that have always been identified for that type of development. And obviously, we have a lot of federal land in our state park. We do all the zoning approvals for permits, so additions, fences, decks, signs. We do changing uses for buildings. We coordinate, we're very, we work in and in with the Building Inspection Department, we're very coordinated with their department. We do zoning inspections. We have 48 current zoning cases, and we do operate on a complaint basis. So any complaints that are received from our office, we follow up on, and that's how many we have currently. And they are mostly in our political debris, stuff like that. Geographic information system, so Emma is our, is our mapping bureau. She does all the mapping for all county departments and agencies. We actually, we had a GIS administrator and we had a GIS technician, and then when our GIS administrator left, instead of backfilling that position, we just had Emma bumped to GIS coordinator, so now she's handling it all. We do have an internship program, so we try to have one to two interns a year, and we do have one currently just assisting her for this semester from JMU, so. The, she manages our GIS website, so she updates all the parcel information, zoning, all the layers that are on this. And this is really a great tool, that you'd be surprised how many people in the community use it in real earth.
I was going to say, if you want to find out who owns these property, this is a great way to do it.
It is a great resource, so.
Yep.
She manages the county's ENG 911 addressing, so we provide the distribution of ENG 911 data to the schools, emergency services, and tree. We're currently finishing up a build-out study, so we took Anne with our previous GIS administrator and then several interns. We have taken all of the subdivisions that we have in the county and broken them down into how many lots are still left to be developed in each subdivision, and we've taken in different constraints like floodplain and really steep topography and tried to figure out how many lots we actually have that are still platted and developable in the county. So we're finishing that up. She's working with NG 911, and that is additional, and 911 is going to additional, more additional basis, and that was ran off of, off of GIS manly, so Emma's had to do a lot of work with that incorporation of the Sheriff's Department to make sure that all of our addresses are on point and our roads center lines. She manages all the data layers, and she manages the GIS service, which is, which is the data integration with the government. That is all, just some things we also do. We go each year, each semester to the Smithsonian Conservation Research Center and talk planning and local government with the Georgia nation students there, so we have great partnerships with that great asset in our community. We lead the local entitlementer council out of our department. We do have our internship program. We serve on the town CBDG committee, and that's about all.
Just don't forget economic...
That's about all.
Don't forget economic development, being our liaison to economic development.
We meet with, we meet with businesses all the time, just, and different developers and just property owners with different ideas of, what they want to know their property. So we spend a lot of time with them, but we have a really, really great team. We're a small team, but a really great team, so.
Were you responsible for getting the Chick-fil-A food truck here?
Well, they came to us.
They're awesome.
They really are.
Yes, it's awesome.
So he owns Apple Bossa Mall, and he, Chick-fil-A let him have the food truck for several months to make up for the revenue he had lost at the mall being shut down through COVID, so. But now he is doing really well, and he's here five days a week.
Yes, he is.
And they want to do something more permanent.
Well, that's the goal. So the regional director came up from Georgia. He said a couple of weekends ago, and looked at, looked at the area again. I mean, we've been trying, but I think that in talking to them, we think that this should really prove that...
There's a market.
There's a market, there's a great market, yeah.
Now, where is he now? Is he out?
He's a target five days a week.
He's five days a week. He was at Springtime Gardens. Then they were across from some...
South Street.
Turnmeier Galleries, so they were on South Street, and now they are every day, they are right near me.
Five days a week.
Which is not good.
Monday through Friday?
They are.
So where are they on weekends?
They're not here on weekends, and I, oh, no, they were at, they're across from Turnmeier on Saturdays.
Yeah, they've been on Saturdays.
Yeah, the chiropractic place, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. Carriers, I think, is where they were parked in their parking lot, but, yeah. It's a dangerous thing to have close to your house.
I just can't get to them if I have to come out to John Marshall on Saturday, I can't get there.
Thank you, Taryn.
Thank you, Taryn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That committee that you have, where all the entities get together, I think that's great. I almost feel like anybody that comes in to build a house or whatever, it should be mandatory they attend one of those so they can talk to everybody.
It's been a really great committee. We also, we also do site visits to the actual building, like they even go with somebody from the town.
Well, we got one more.
I know.
Oh, okay. If you got to go, you got to go.
So they know before they purchase the property exactly.
He was walking out to slow.
It was great. It solved a lot of problems down the road.
It has helped. How are you, Taryn?
No.
You're fine. It's always been a...
Taryn? You wanted to add to?
No, one of the main reasons, I knew there were a few questions that were going to come up with the Terrence as well as possibly with the Parks and Rec, and I also wanted to make sure how the presentations were going so that I was prepared for one more turn in the bucket. And with the brewery, I, there were pieces that involved as far as the structures and things of that nature, so many questions that came up, I wanted to be here available if any of them came up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks a lot, Taryn. Taryn, it's your turn.
My turn.
You're going to talk about the compensation plan?
Yes, and I will try to keep it short and general, and I know it's been a long day.
You've had her very busy this past month with social services, and then firefighters, and then the finance director, and then the fire chief, and in between that, she's got to keep juggling these different bonus provisions that are different for the state, and then different for the CARES Act, and then difference for what we do for the other employees and keep everybody in bucket one, bucket two, bucket three, but you can only be in one bucket, or you're half in one bucket and half in the other.
That's right.
That sounds way too complicated.
It has been very convoluted, but we're...
And in between that, she's doing the new comp plan.
And just the day-to-day, to make sure everybody gets paid.
We don't have time for day-to-day.
You don't like to be bored now, do you?
Oh, I'm telling you, I'd be welcome a little boredom sometimes, but...
That's not day-to-day, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's wait until Doris comes back. Yeah, let's wait until Doris comes back.
Did, did our team leave?
He left.
Okay, I'm gonna move to you.
He was done.
It's kind of a little bit of a bad job.
He was complaining that he had something to do.
I told them I would try to keep it short and general and, but I know you guys are done.
So as I said this morning, the budget, um, little revenues look good as we can tell. The sales tax is, is very good, pleased with that. Um, meals tax, it's coming back. It's real close now. Was like that, now it's down here like that and we're, we're coming there. And then in the chart, we've got the COVID money that is our backup reserve, this miscellaneous. And we've got a couple of places in the budget where we're spending low. So what you budgeted this year in for salaries, you had three different categories she's gonna talk about, but they look good. We're in a position now where we can, we feel we can recommend that to you.
Yep. So just in, in generality, so, um, the approved budget for fiscal year 2021 did include a one point five percent cost of living increase for employees. So that is across the board and it was about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars was the funding estimate on that. So of course that was delayed due to, you know, very understandably with the concern. So it's speaking to the revenues, that, that was about the revenue projections from COVID-19. Whenever we're ready, you guys are ready to approve the implementation of that, that would, um, be applied to our salary scale and it adjusts, um, like I already have a, to come to the next meeting, the proposal, so it, it moves the entire scale by one point five percent. So it builds in each grade, each step is increased by one and a half percent.
When you bring that.
We'll make it big.
Thank you.
Yes, yes. I wasn't passing the salary thing, but just this is the document what it'll, what it'll look like. So it's our scale. I know it's tiny. It is tiny. Um, and then the other piece was the budget also included three hundred thousand dollars that was set aside for implementation of phase two of the, of the compensation plan. So that's what we've been also delayed and that's what we've been working on, trying to implement. Um, and there's a lot of factors with that, um, how to, to best, um, make that work and touch as many people as we can and address some of the needs that we have. So, um, what we want to present is a, uh, with us being on a step scale where all of our steps are separated about two and a half percent. So what we're proposing is to give everyone who was hired prior to October first of 2019, so the year, um, would receive the step increase, so the two and a half percent. And then for those positions that were identified as being substantially below the market, we were only able to implement a partial recommendation because it's a phased approach is to try to address that even more, um, and take additional steps for those positions. So basically get, to give you some examples or some categories of employees, um, like fire and rescue captains, um, there might be, uh, three steps included for them instead of the five that was, uh, recommended to, to finish it. So we've tried to do about half this cycle to, to reach those. Um, so that, so we have, um, fire and rescue is a big one, um, captains, lieutenants, the, the field staff basically. Um, and then our maintenance, like our equipment operators and maintenance technicians, um, those type of positions also. So it varies depending on the, the category of employee. Um, and then there's some miscellaneous other ones.
The sheriff request on the dispatchers.
Yep, that's, that's.
And they are included in there.
Yes, so there's, there's also some compression adjustments is recommended by, by the county administrator, um, taking into account tenure service and being in the position. Um, and then yes, some reclassifications also is recommended. So what the sheriff had asked for, we want to try to, you know, to include that from taking communications officers exactly from the grade five to grade seven and placing those, those individuals accordingly. Um, and then the, a couple of other things that weren't necessarily part of the phase two implementation, but I don't know if you want to speak about the IT director.
Putting the IT director in there so there's a position level, uh, so that we can begin that process and be talking to the school system. You know, our agreement with the school system says we give them six months notice. So the logical time to do this from their perspective is going to be July one. So we would be giving them, if this is approved, we would be giving them notice in the first of January.
Okay. So you, you mentioned with fire and rescue, that captains and lieutenants, does that address the non-ranked firefighters as well?
Yes, firefighters and ENTs and medics, absolutely. It was the field, it was all in the field operations, basically.
And does this address, um, what Sheriff Butler was talking about this morning? Do deputies face, or there's step increases for them or had that already been done previously?
So there's some compression adjustments for some deputies, um.
When you say compression, that's because somebody might be a step or two above somebody else and so there, there's some adjustments.
Right, exactly. For someone who was just hired versus someone who's been here five years.
Right.
That, that sort of thing, exactly. So tenure.
Some of the new deputies responding to your question, they were brought in at step C or step D.
Or higher.
Or even higher than that. So they've already had their.
Somebody that's been there.
Yes.
They are, they've already had their compression.
So they've had their increase, so we're not gonna increase.
So we're gonna, we're more concerned about those people who've been there longer than his new people.
Well, and that was another question I had. It, you know, I, I want everything to be fair and equitable, but if somebody is, for whatever reason, on the wrong step, you're not gonna decrease them down.
Oh, no, no.
But they're not automatically gonna get an increase because this isn't across the board.
That portion, right.
Everybody on step A gets this much increase.
Right.
So, okay, good.
Right.
So Ed, have you given any thought to getting a, a grant writer across? I mean, everywhere I go, every meeting I've attended, somebody's talking about writing grants and getting people to, to do that. Yeah, the library would love to have some grant writing help from the county. Everybody wants grant writing help.
We, we need a grant writer. We had one before, Brandy was a grant writer, started out there.
And then she worked herself up.
And then became a grant implementer.
Well, she still writes grants.
Sometimes she still writes.
But it isn't her primary responsibility any longer. So perhaps if we could find a junior grant writer or somebody who's done some, and Brandy could be there, you know, kind of their mentor or so, yeah.
Yeah, Dr. Daley and I have talked generally about having a grant writer that may do it departmentally, you know? I need a, I need a grant, you need a grant, you need a grant.
That's what I mean, across all, across the whole government.
Or even, uh, even as far as regionally, we talked a little bit about that. If we could get, could get a great person, um, to, to help not just us, but other areas too.
Well, I, I would think that you would even be able to, so if you got a grant writer, I think you could be able to charge them out, if you will, like almost like we do public works, right?
Like the school needs a grant.
Yep.
This one needs, take it out of the budgets.
Yes, exactly.
Usually you can charge for the grant administration.
Okay.
But not for the grant writer.
Not for the writing part, okay.
Now, if you've already, if you're already administering grant one, you can be, you can charge yourself there while you're also actually writing grant two.
Okay, yes.
But you gotta get that first one in it. Do we still have a grant writer in there?
So it, it exists in our classification system.
We have, but we just don't have anybody specifically to that.
We don't have a body.
Right, a person, yeah.
Is it a budget, is it a line item with a, a budget on the budget that was never taken out?
Um, I'd have to look at the line item on there. I don't know that it's still actually left in the line item. It's, it would be unfunded, um, because we're not funding that position, but it is.
That amount had been left.
No, the money was not left.
Right, the money was unleft, yeah.
Yeah, I even heard Parks and Rec say, you know, they could use grants to get certain thing, yeah, and so, yeah.
Yes, but it still very much exists in our, we didn't do away with the position or anything like that. It's still very much in our classification.
Well, and the person pays for themselves. That's the thing.
Well.
Yeah.
They can.
Your overall strategy is that you would have the two public hearings on the seventeenth and then you would have a third, a resolution, because the CARES Act hazardous duty pay can be done by resolution.
Okay.
The money from the comp board, which is bonus, can only be done, we're not sure. If it's county money, has to be done with a, an ordinance. And to make sure, we're gonna do this by ordinance. Maybe we do, maybe we don't. We're not, it's not real clear.
There could be too much, but you look like.
That's right. So we're gonna have this extra hearing for that. And then the other employees who appreciation pay will be in a by ordinance.
Okay.
And all three, the intent is every employee who has been here ninety days or longer will receive, if they're full-time, one thousand dollars. And if they're part-time, if they've worked three hundred and seventy-five hours, they will receive five hundred dollars. But they're not gonna get a thousand in this pile and five hundred in this bucket. If they get five hundred here, they're only gonna get five hundred here, so that everybody's the same.
So the turtle is a thousand dollars.
So that everybody gets the same.
That's what I was gonna ask her, if we give them a thousand out of our CARES fund and then the comp gives them whatever.
Right, well, actually we'll be able to reduce that CARES money to that.
So everybody's gonna get a thousand.
So everybody's gonna get the same.
That'll make, keep the, you got more than I got mentality down.
And that's, the intent is that they're all the same, uh, everybody made the same effort. Now, anybody who was at home and didn't work, they don't get paid. If they were, if they went and telecommuted, that's okay. But if they weren't working, if they took the time off, then it's not.
Okay.
I think everybody worked.
I think.
I don't think there's anybody.
You don't have anybody in that category.
And we're probably harder than that.
Well, you have to, you have to, and you have to figure out a way to work from home, right?
Well, some, some people, at least in, in one department, according to them, said that they had some people who went home, but I think they're back now.
That's very short.
As long as they were, as long as they were here ninety days. Um, and then we'll do, and that will, the intent is those checks will be the end of November, maybe December one.
Oh, that's awesome.
Just in time for, for Christmas.
Because that's what the comp board says.
Yeah.
And then we will do, at the same meeting, we'll propose this plan to move the scale one and a half percent and then do the second phase of the compression. And those would be effective December one, so they would get the check. Actually, I think you said they pay just before Christmas.
The last business day before Christmas.
So they'll get paid then, um, and then we'll do the third phase a year from now is what we would do. If you wanna come in and see how any of it works and look at, well, how does the firefighter move along or how does the social services? Give her a call, come down and see her. And then you can, you can track it if you want. I don't want to go into all the thing here, but you can come down and see how the positions work and how they're gonna do it.
Right. So what you'll have for your approval will be approving the new scale and the new schematic because there are a couple of reclassifications on there as well. So that's what.
And that'll be the first one.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
That'll be the first one.
It'll be on the, whatever the order of the agenda. So we'll have the, the bonus or, I'm sorry, the hazard pay and the acknowledgement pay and the comp board mandated bonus and then also, um, the, the salary.
So we're gonna do that all at one time?
Yes.
That's awesome.
That's the board's pleasure.
That sounds like the pleasurable part. That sounds excellent. Anything that expedites the, the process.
It's time to get this done.
Yep, we've gotta get it done. It's the, okay.
Jody, anything else?
Uh, no, I think the only other piece of that was, uh, what, and it'll be included is the administrative assistant position in planning. Um, that was a part-time position that Cindy vacated. I think the need is absolutely there for full time.
Yeah, I agree.
And that is one question I didn't ask.
I think just with Karen's presentation, you can tell, that's a busy, busy office.
I knew that Cindy had left, but I, I did not ask the question, did she need help? And obviously she does.
I'm not sure that we don't, she doesn't even have a community development need or something, because it's like, when she was describing, I don't know how they get all that done with that few, with those few people.
They're creating, she got, maybe they're creating.
Yeah, maybe community development is in the strategic plan, right? In the strategic visioning thing that we plan to do.
Right, and you have your whole budget process.
Right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Do we have a motion for adjourn?
I have motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.